Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk will note that council members are present in the chambers except for our colleague, Councilmember Vince Workman, and he is absent tonight because his father died on Sunday. And so, we ask for prayers for Councilmember Workman and his family and mother, Commissioner Liz Workman of Dakota County. So, it's been a sad time for us here at City Hall, having one of our colleagues' father pass away suddenly. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online, and all of our staff members are here in the chambers. I want the members of the public to know that they can attend the meeting through online, burnsville.gov/meetings, or Comcast, Channel 16 or 859. But due to tonight's technical difficulties with the audio system, the public can view the meeting through Zoom, but will have to use the chat feature to submit comments. So, we'll continue to work on the technical issues with the audio here in the chambers. So, thank you for understanding. The next item on the agenda is our announcements and presentations, and our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, September 6th, and Tuesday, September 20th at 5:30 PM. Work sessions, it's been rescheduled from August 8th to Tuesday, August 23rd, and 5:30 PM, and that will be in the Dakota B Room. And we also have a special work session for Service Discussion III, and that is Tuesday, August 16th, tonight, and that's at 6:00. Now, all meetings are all held in the council chambers, except when it's not going to be, and then I will also announce where that meeting is going to be held, like the meeting on Tuesday, August 23rd, that will be in Dakota B. And tonight, we are privileged to have with us Mr. Luke Fisher from the League of Minnesota Cities to make a presentation for the City of Excellence Award, and if Ms. Brewer and Ms. Knighton-Johnson come up to receive the award. Mr. Fisher, welcome to Burnsville.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council. First, I just want to extend our sympathies to Councilmember Workman and his family. That's terrible news, and please extend that on our behalf.
He's watching, by the way.
Wonderful. I'm here on behalf of the League of Minnesota Cities, our Executive Director, Dave Unmott, and our Board of Directors. I actually had to bring some Burnsville muscle with me tonight, and I hope that that's okay. Craig Johnson is one of our lobbyists, and he's going to help me with just a little bit of the presentation. I know we're short on time, so we'll move fast here tonight, but Craig will come up in just a second to help frame up the award that you all received. Before we talk about the recognition, though, I always think it's important for folks to understand who we are and who's giving you this award, because it's important context. It really is.
And it's good for our residents to know that.
Absolutely.
Because we know who you are.
Right.
But those who are watching, and our residents, don't.
Yeah. So, the League of Minnesota Cities is an association that represents 835 of the state's 854 cities. Our largest member is the city of Minneapolis. They've got a population of 425,000, and our smallest member is the city of Berry. You guys want to guess their population?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three? That's a good guess, Mayor. Any other guesses? No one else is... Well, if we're playing Price is Right rules, you'd be out, because you're over, ma'am. Their population is 13. And so, as an association, we provide services to everyone from Berry to Minneapolis, and Burnsville is one of those cities that we look to as one of those good examples of a place that consistently gets it right. As an association, we get to see the very best of the best across the state, and so when we see it, we know it, and that's why we're really happy to be here tonight to present our City of Excellence Award to you. I'm going to invite Craig up to set up just a little bit about the award. We're going to show a quick video, and then we'll hand over the hardware.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and welcome. Welcome home.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was not a long walk to get...
I know. Your commute is very short.
Yeah. So, again, my name's Craig Johnson. I'm with the League of Minnesota Cities. Burnsville won the City of Excellence Award for the topical category "Improving Your City's Workplace Culture." The Burnsville University project that we recognize today certainly checks all the boxes for characteristics of an excellent nominee for its innovative and collaborative nature, which were key things we were looking for. As our league staff travels around the state for member visits, we hear that workforce challenges rank very, very highly right now with every city. And at a time when many organizations, including cities, are struggling to recruit and retain employees, the city of Burnsville should be commended for establishing a program that goes a long ways towards both of those goals. A well-trained and motivated workforce is a win-win situation, not only for our city's employees, I can say that as a resident, but also for the residents like myself, who've grown to expect high-quality constituent staff services from the city of Burnsville. By encouraging staff to make decisions about professional development and conveniently providing those development opportunities, you've empowered them to take greater ownership of their roles and responsibilities. No doubt that as word of this project continues to spread, you'll be hearing from other cities who are interested in emulating the Burnsville University model. One common thread that we tend to see among winners is solid vision and support shown by the city's elected leadership. Congratulations to all of you for your commitment to staff and to residents in seeing this project through. And the league and our member cities look forward to hearing more about your success with Burnsville University as the initiative continues to grow and develop and prosper. So, thank you very much for that, and...
Thank you.
Can you play the video? Perfect.
Burnsville University is our organizational university here at the city of Burnsville. We say it's our home for everything training and development. It's really a new initiative that we started in 2021. It's the tool that we're really using to help people and to best deliver good service to our community.
We have different locations that all of our employees reside in throughout the workday, and so having one spot where employees can gather and meet with people in different departments that they don't see every day is a really good way to create connection and kind of a common language to help our culture here in the city. We have different training classrooms here at City Hall, at our maintenance facility, and at our fire station that we can use to provide different training opportunities for our employees. We create all of the workbooks, including our process improvement workbooks. We have different toolkits that are really used as a resource for our employees during the class, but also to look back on and reflect on after the class. One of the things that we pulled out and that we've heard from multiple employees is they really liked the interactive things that we did in class that helped kind of simplify and made the material a little more adjustable. So, we have kind of looked at that while we're creating other classes in our facilitation practices.
As part of achieving our vision in Burnsville, our council sets strategic priorities, and one of those is organizational culture, which says that we want to create great experiences in our organization so that our employees can be the same in our community. And we invest time in that and allow them to invest time in their strengths, and we recognize and grow and develop so that they can ultimately deliver the best possible service to our community. So, when I think about organizational culture, it's really how we do things around here, how we live out our values, it's the experience that employees have at work, it's the support they feel from their manager, it's feeling like they're invested and recognized for their individual strengths and talents. We've always been incredibly lucky in Burnsville to have the support of our elected officials. Our mayor and council are incredibly supportive of Burnsville University and the time that we take and the investment that we make in growing our staff and helping them learn. And so, I'm incredibly appreciative to be in a place like Burnsville where we have that support.
Thank you. We are so proud of you, Ms. Brewer and Ms. Knighton-Johnson. Thank you for your work, and thank you for recognizing them.
This is our Windows Weekly, Paul Theron and Aaron Jones.
Oh, okay.
That one isn't our video, just a...
Okay. But yes, I think it's just appropriate that the two ladies who have worked very hard in doing that work receive it, the award. But I just want to thank you for coming to Burnsville and letting people know what good work our staff do, because what they are doing here, and thank you to our city manager and his leadership, is about creating a culture that cares for its employees, and therefore our employees do the same in service to the people of our community. And they do great work, and I'm just... All of us, I believe, when I speak, I speak for all of us, so proud of the work that they're doing. And thank you so much, Ms. Brewer and Ms. Knighton-Johnson, for your work. Thank you. Now, we need to take a picture.
We do.
Yeah. Okay. Who's taking the picture? Oh, there she is. Okay. You guys come here. No, no, yeah, right over here, and I'm going to come down, and...
She's right in front of me, Luke. It's fine. That was going to work out, too.
Okay, you guys, okay.
Perfect. And three. One, two, three. And one more. And one more. I always say one more, and I need two more. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Ms. Collins, is there anyone in queue?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. We will move on. The next item is addition to the final agenda, and that is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindberg, do we have any emergency items?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Members of the council. Okay. We will move on. The next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. However, an item in a consent agenda can be pulled for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item in a consent agenda to be pulled for a separate discussion and vote? Mr. Lindberg.
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Members of the council. May I have a motion to adopt the consent? There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. We are now at the regular agenda. And the first item on the regular agenda is the application of the Burnsville Sanitary Landfill incorporation for wetland replacement plan, development stage plan unit development, and a floodplain conditional use permit to increase disposal capacity by adding up to 26 million cubic yards of municipal solid waste, raise the landfill height to 1,082 feet above mean sea level, change the end-use plan to remove golf course concept, and allow the excavation grading work within the Minnesota River floodplain at 2650 Cliff Road West, and to approve the wetland replacement plan, development stage PUD, and the floodplain CUP, and to adopt the findings of fact. Presenting this evening is Ms. Deb Garros, our city planner, and we thank her for all of the good work that she has done. Thank you, Ms. Garros.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The application before you this evening is something that is long coming, the Burnsville Sanitary Landfill in one form or another. One owner or another has been really here in the city since the late 1950s, so this is something that I'm sure that everyone is very familiar with. They're looking for development stage plan unit development. There are three different applications. They're seeking for approval, so the development stage plan unit development, a floodplain conditional use permit, and then also wetland replacement plan and wetland credits. The subject site is in the northwest corner of the city. There are two lots, Lot 1 Block 1 has the actual landfill, and then Outlot A is the riverfront property. In terms of the development stage PUD, all of these items are included in your agenda packet. I will not read through all of them, but to summarize, they're looking to reduce the size of the landfill footprint, to reduce it from 216 to 204 acres. They would like to increase the total disposal capacity for the landfill up to 45 million cubic yards, decrease the amount of industrial and demolition construction waste types, increase the landfill height basically to a maximum height of 372 feet or elevation 1082 feet above mean sea level. The final end-use plan is the one thing I will be discussing with you this evening. It's really the only change from the concept PUD plan that was approved in 2019. Floodplain CUP is to allow work within the flood fringe, basically to complete removal of their dredge spoils site, earlier approvals that were granted years ago, and then also to create the new annex development area, which is a 27-acre area that they would like to add, construct stormwater facilities, and construct their flood levy. There is an interim use permit that was granted a number of years ago for the dredge materials site, and that was set to expire at the end of 2020. They are requesting that that be extended to allow them to do that work at such time as they do the levy work, so that would be another item. There are deviations that are requested for setbacks for two existing facilities, and then the approval of the wetland replacement plan. I talked a little bit about these. For the wetland replacement plan, this was reviewed by the Parks and Natural Resources Commission on July 18th. They are recommending approval of the plan. The new plan actually reduces the wetland impacts from what was previously approved in the past, and they are also going to be purchasing 7.82 acres of credit, and that purchase agreement has been received by the city. Terms of the PUD benefits, again, these are included in the packet, many benefits for the project. This also is something that sets forth a longstanding objective of the council, basically to try to reduce the landfill impacts overall in the Minnesota River water and consolidate them, or have the opportunity to consolidate them at this landfill site. In terms of the deviations, there's an existing shop building on the south side of the landfill and a harvester tank. These were constructed a number of years ago, intended at that time to be part of the future golf course. The golf course will not be constructed, so the deviations are basically for setbacks to allow the existing setbacks for those two facilities to remain. In terms of the 2019 approved PUD concept plan, the same height was discussed at that point, and in addition to that, the concept plan to replace the golf course with an end-use plan that showed basically park and recreation-type facilities. After going through that and also going through the environmental review process of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, there are a number of things that were identified that really make the end-use plan of the 2019 concept not possible to meet at this current time. What we're looking at is the orange circle on this plan is where the 27-acre ADA area is, and the red lines indicate where there are existing trail easements. They are going to need to come back at some point in the future to vacate some of those trail easements which are in that ADA area. We'll also probably be looking at realigning some of those trails as well, primarily due to a couple of things. One are the wetlands, where they are located, the physical constructability or issues in order to do that. There's also a Cargill deed restriction on the very west part of the property, so getting a trail north to south will be also a consideration. The biggest thing that changed is that as part of the MPCA process, there is a new air permit requirement, and this applies not only to the landfill but also to the KMM property. And where this comes into play, the idea is to keep the public away from these facilities to protect them. Part of that includes installing security fencing, and that security fencing actually is going to prevent the ability to get trails through there. Staff is working with MPCA staff because they do show some of these security fences in city future right-of-way. That isn't a problem as long as the landfill is operating, but at such time as we would want to make an improvement, then we would need to work that out.
That'll be far into the future.
Yes, exactly. So, what they are proposing, again, the 27-acre annex development area, they are basically reducing or moving back the landfill footprint from by the river to about 720-some feet further to the south, and then they have a configuration plan as to how the site will be filled over time to bring it up to that ultimate elevation. And this is just the, really the same information, a little bit further broken down, but very consistent with the 2019 concept PUD. Grading plan, basically just in the north part of the area, this is where we're looking at some stormwater ponding and some of the wetland work. The Planning Commission reviewed this actually at two meetings. The public hearing started on July 25th and then was continued to August 8th to allow the applicant some opportunity to meet with the DNR. They have been meeting, but there's not been a resolution to the issues that the DNR was looking at, so in the conditions, staff has included a condition that they continue to work that out. DNR has some remaining issues really related to the environmental impact review, and that is related to endangered species, providing plan for that, and then also public waters, infrastructure. So, on the 8th, Planning Commission recommended, they took two motions. They recommended 5-0 to add a condition, and they wanted to ensure that the freeway landfill and dump properties, that that material, which is estimated to be about 6 million tons of garbage, that that is brought to the waste management landfill, and that there is, the ultimate height of elevation 1082 is basically reserved to accommodate that 6 million cubic yards, which we do or don't know when...
When that would happen.
Or if that may occur. In addition to that, one of the items that the applicant had brought up is that we don't know the composition of that material. If there's any hazardous waste within that material, it will not be allowed to be brought to waste management landfill, because they don't allow that type of waste. So, some unknowns. The ultimate recommendation from the Planning Commission was 3 to 2, and they recommended approval of the application subject to items 1 through 39. Those are the conditions that were included in your packet and the findings of fact. In terms of the condition, that the Planning Commission wanted to look at, it's condition nine within your report, and the staff recommendation going into that was that condition nine just include that the maximum height of the landfill will be 372 feet or that elevation 1082. The Planning Commission recommended what we had put together as condition nine. In addition to that, there is the last condition in the report. This is recommended by staff. It came about after further discussions with MPCA and the applicant, and that is the applicant shall actively participate in the MPCA. And I'm not going to say what it actually is, because I don't think I can.
We can all say POS.
Yes, monitoring program, and the applicant is willing to do that. With that, Mayor and council, I do have the conditions listed if there are any questions and can stand for comments.
Yeah. So, Ms. Garros, one of the things in looking through all of this is condition nine, and I understand and acknowledge what the Planning Commission was trying to do, because our priority to the MPCA was that the materials from freeway get moved over to waste management. But because the condition nine is very prescriptive, I like, and I hope that my colleagues agree, what staff and the applicant had agreed to, because we don't know, as you mentioned, what the material is inside the freeway landfill, and we don't know that. And so, to hold them to that is not appropriate, I don't believe. So, what you had agreed to with the applicant, the maximum height of the landfill shall be at 372 feet, which is 260 above what it is now.
Above what's approved.
Yeah.
Yes. That's correct.
So, I'm just going to ask the applicant, Mr. Miller, that is what you and our staff agreed to?
Yes.
On condition nine? So, members of the council, I don't know if you have any thoughts, but I would like to go back to the original condition nine and not the recommended condition from the Planning Commission. I appreciate and acknowledge the work that they have done, but I believe that it's too prescriptive with regard to what we're trying to understand and move forward with what's going on, especially when we know that freeway landfill has an application that's going to be coming before us because they want to reopen it, so...
Yes, that's correct.
I don't want to tie the hands of the Burnsville Sanitary Landfill with getting, because this is too prescriptive, because it's speaking to freeway landfill, members of the council. That's what I would like to mention, and everything else from my perspective and to our residents. We are the host to a landfill, and I understand that there are many members of our community who do not want to see the landfill expand. However, the landfill is here. It's not going to go away. The decision was made back in the 50s, and so we are the host to it, and there are some benefits. I am also very appreciative of the MPCA and the work that they have done to ensure from an environmental standpoint that the resources in Burnsville are protected. And then for me, that is very important, and that we all work together to ensure that the environment and the water resource in Burnsville is protected. Yes, there's going to be added heights, but the footprint is also reduced. And so, to our community members, we're doing the best that we can with all of our partners, including the MPCA and also the EPA from Washington, and they also had a comment to do to this, and this has to do with the general public preclusion item, and that is to protect the public when the landfill is closed. So, members of the council, I don't know your thoughts about this, but it is here, and it is something that we need to continue to work with. Councilmember Schultz.
If I could hear from our attorney on the differences between the two proposed condition nines.
Mr. Jamnik.
Mayor and council, the display has the language difference in there. One of the legal concerns always is having an applicant... One of the legal concerns always is having an applicant have their approvals conditioned on a neighboring property's behavior, and I think that's what the mayor's referring to. Obviously, the intent or the city's goal is to do a dig and haul method of the Real Action Program, but that depends on the cooperation or the effectiveness of the MPCA to take the freeway landfill and dump refuse and transfer. Waste management is a business. What we're approving today is their land use for it, and it would not be appropriate to condition their approval on the outcome of the neighboring property.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Mayor, I will agree with you on that then.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments? Yeah. Yeah, Councilmember Keely.
I'm not sure.
Okay. I think there's, we've got some problems.
We're doing our best.
Yeah.
Is that why?
Yeah.
Or is it memorized? Well, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just use this opportunity to make some general comments because, and I agree 100% with number nine, and I get watching the Planning Commission, the intent by the Planning Commission, they want to try and, you know, join those together. I don't, we don't know the eventual disposition of that 6 million cubic yard, so it really doesn't have anything to do with this particular circumstance, but I understand their intent, and I think their intent was trying to be good to the city and good to the environment. Well, first and foremost, I, and I know everyone up here, is here to protect the environment. None of us sitting here would choose to be a landfill host city. That decision was made for us 60 years ago. So we are what we are. And the land around that landfill isn't going to develop into mixed-use buildings abutting a large green hill 40 years from now. But it is also eventually a large green grass plant shrubbery-growth hill that is really not too different from all of the other hills that roll all around us. We're a riverfront city, and we're a very hilly city. And so the comments related to the height, comments by our friends to the north, being highly disingenuous with trying to represent that this would be some giant purple pyramid hill, is so far false that it's kind of ridiculous. It's almost laughable what they presented. There are renderings of what it would look like as a finished green grassy hill, and it barely, from standing on the golf tee box in the Bloomington Golf Course and looking southwest right at it, it doesn't even rise above the tree line. So let's not be fooled by bad information and false information. The height is not a concern. What is a concern is how far that landfill could have gone toward the river. And one of the things that the applicant has done to rectify that is pull it back, as Ms. Gueros pointed, by about 700 feet away from the river on the north. So by shrinking the footprint and getting it away from the river, they've made a very good move to make what is already a landfill, a more environmentally responsible landfill. Plus, we all should note, this is a lined, managed landfill using modern-day technology and scientific data. That's very different from our other landfill that the mayor had noted. We have three landfills, because 60 years ago, we were barely a township, and we were like the place across the river that Bloomington and Minneapolis wanted to dump their garbage. And I also found it interesting that Bloomington objected to the additional landfill capacity on an already designated landfill piece of property, because I believe about 60% of the garbage that we take comes from Hennepin County, and the majority of that, or a good portion of that, comes from the city of Bloomington. And so, as I said earlier, nobody chooses today to be a landfill host city, but somebody chose 60 years ago for Burnsville to be three landfill sites. And our focus needs to be not on BSLI, but on the freeway landfill and freeway dump that are not lined, that do have an imminent threat of some sort. We don't know. It's been there for 50-plus years, and it hasn't been a problem. But ultimately, based on knowledge that we all have today, we have to get those cleaned up. That's where our focus and our frustrations and our attention should be. I think, all in all, this particular PUD amendment and some other related things that are coming with it are very good for the city. Does adding more capacity to an existing landfill that's already permitted to have landfill on it, a good thing or a bad thing? It depends on the lens you want to look through. We have been working very hard as an entire council and city staff for a long time, working with partners like Waste Management and BSLI, and with the landowner, and the EPA, and the MPCA, and the county with regard to the two landfills that aren't lined. And for this particular project, I like the fact that they're pulling away from the northern border, and I like the fact that it's lined. I like the fact that they have the latest and greatest technology, monitoring everything, the methane, the leachate, everything. And it's the best of today's technology being deployed to protect our environment. And for us, our aquifer runs well below that. That is what we're concerned about. That is what I'm always concerned about, and making sure that we do everything to protect that. Again, our focus is, should not be on criticizing this project. We need to be focused on remedying the freeway landfill and dump, getting that unlined landfill out and put in a lined landfill. And then we can no longer worry about that garbage being a potential problem at any given time in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Schultz, Councilmember Schultz, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah. So I, you know, when we're open to making motions, I will do so for.
You probably do that, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah. And yes, I like that they're moving it back from the river. I like that the footprint is reduced. I like that the wetlands' impact is reduced. I like the idea for possible trails and being able to link that up. I think that is excellent. It's something that our residents really value is our trail system. And also, if Bloomington has a problem with this landfill, they can take their garbage somewhere else. So with that, unless you.
All right. Take it away. Councilmember Gustafson.
I agree with you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, this has been a tough issue. Like Dan says here earlier, we would never have put a landfill here had it been our choice today, but we have it, and we have to deal with it, like so many things in the city, between our malls and all the different things we're dealing with. It's here, and we have to deal with it. I know the freeway landfill is a separate issue from the waste management site, and to tie it together is a very difficult thing to do. I believe all of us up here hope it does get tied together at some point when our legislators are able to get some monies for us to get this thing cleaned up and start moving it over. But we have to be prepared for that when that happens. And I know they're going out for bids right now, so we need to have a place for it to go if we ever hope for them to dig and haul instead of the dig and line, because the dig and line, as we all are well aware, is going to take away probably close to $1 billion worth of development for us over the years, and that does no good for any of us, and we still have two or three landfills in our city, and now we're reducing to one that can be managed. And you're absolutely right, Dan. These guys are state-of-the-art with what they do. I've seen the plans for catching the methane and all the different things they're up to over there, and it's going to be, I think, good for our city, to be honest with you. And I'm pretty sure the residents and other side will get used to that green hill that they'll be looking at.
Well, it's good for our environment.
I know they didn't want to look at an amphitheater, so.
Right. Yeah. I mean, that amphitheater would have sucked.
So I will be supporting this when Ms. Schultz makes the motion, because I don't want to steal her thunder on that one.
And I just want to congratulate our staff for the work that they've done, because it's been over a year that we continue to do this work. And to the folks from BSLI and Waste Management, thank you for being a good partner and working through all of the issues that have come before us. So to our residents and our businesses who have been listening and hearing all of this for the different hearings that were held by the MPCA, I think there were two here at City Hall. Well, was it last year or was it pre-pandemic that we had them?
I believe pre-pandemic.
It was pre-pandemic. So for our residents to understand that these things just don't happen overnight, it takes a lot of work between our staff and us and our partners here to really go through all of that. And I do want to acknowledge the MPCA. I know you didn't like it because of the way that things were going, but at the end of the day, what we have is a product that protects the environment, especially when Burnsville leads the way in sustainability, that we say we care about the environment. And so all of those things have been addressed, and I thank Waste Management for the work that they've done with our staff and arrived at that. And Ms. Schultz, Councilmember Schultz, before you make your motion, Mr. Miller would like to speak to us. Mr. Miller? And Mr. Miller is representing the applicant.
Your, the motion will need to include that change in though.
No, yes, she will make that change for number nine. But before we get to the motion, Mr. Miller had signed up that he wanted to speak before we take the vote. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak tonight. I just wanted to make some brief comments, and you're correct, the number of public meetings we've had, this would constitute the 10th public meeting we've had on this project. The first one we had in this very room in October of 2018, where Kramer Mining Materials and Waste Management came before you to introduce a new concept in the MRQ so that we could help the city deal with the problem of what to do with the three landfills. And I salute you guys for supporting us and the staff for assisting us through this whole process. This is a process that's going to allow another $2.5 billion in revenue between the Kramer Mining Materials and Burnsville Sanitary Landfill to generate over the next several decades, and it'll also generate close to 3/4 of a billion dollars in host fees for the city, county, and state. So thank you, and I think the citizens of Burnsville and the county also thank you as well.
Okay. Before the vote is taken, because the condition nine that you and staff agree to is still your agreement?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, Councilmember Schultz.
So I move to approve, but substitute the staff-recommended condition for number nine in place of the Planning Commission-recommended condition number nine.
There is a motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to approve the host agreement term sheet with Burnsville Sanitary Landfill, Inc., for waste associated with the expansion of the Burnsville Sanitary Landfill. And presenting this evening is our Public Works Director, Ryan Peterson. Mr. Peterson, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So some people were talking about the benefits that the city receives. That's basically what this item is. We are the host to this landfill. Like I said, we didn't choose to have it here, but we're making the best of it that we can, and there are benefits that Waste Management and BSLI do provide to the city. The terms of this were negotiated, and we have, we're on the same page on this. So this is just the term sheet. We would actually come back to you with the actual host agreement based upon this. I'll just run through some of these quickly. The host agreement is, most of the areas in this would be applicable all the way through all the filling, except for the dollars that we receive, which would be reviewed on a 10-year period. The contract can be reopened by either side if another landfill opens up in Scott or Dakota Counties, making it uncompetitive either for the city or for BSLI. Burnsville Citizen Benefits, they are going to continue with that coupon program that they do currently, allowing residents to drop a load off of there each year. They are continuing to take all of the city waste from all of our buildings, as well as legacy events. We'll be completing a new garbage refuse and collection services agreement with the current status of all of our different buildings that we have. They are going to take city parks' garbage, truck waste, and new, with this one is actually taking all the street sweepings that we get, so that's an additional benefit that we hadn't had before. On the host community fee, like I said, this one would get renewed every 10 years, and we would negotiate it at that point. We're going to start in 2023 with this agreement. The current rate of per ton that we get is $4.33, and there is no inflationary factor. What we've negotiated is a starting rate at $6.83 per ton, and then a 3.5% inflationary factor moving forward. This is based on kind of aggregating the results of what Pine Bend and Inver Grove Heights has. Our interim CFO, Finance Director, helped make sure that we were very competitive at this while still allowing Waste Management to be competitive at the same time. So we would go up, like I said, throughout 3.5% each year, starting at $6.83 per ton in 2023, so a significant increase there. We shall not charge host community fees if we do get what we're hoping for and move over the freeway landfill and dump. That will help it make it more cost-competitive compared to the dig and line perspective without that way of cleaning that up. Park dedication fee, this is basically what, we're getting a one-time expansion fee, and it's based upon the park dedication ordinance and statutes that there are that would result in BSLI paying the city approximately $1.9 million for items that are not in renovations but for new and expansion to the park system. And there's a slight modification that staff would request you make, that you'd replace the word "will" with the word "may" and add "or" here. So basically, we may make a trail connection around the landfill, but we're not prescribing that that is what needs to be done, and it could be something else. But basically, this is the one-time expansion fee that would be in the form of park dedication of approximately $1.9 million. And then these other areas, they'll definitely help us out, but I won't spend any time on them. So with that, I'd stand for any questions on this term sheet. And like I said, we'd be bringing this back in likely a month or two.
Mr. Peterson, I want to thank you for all of the hard work that you've put into this and very conscientiously worked with the staff at Waste Management to get an agreement through all of this. I also want to commend you with regard to, because one of the things that we had talked about, and I always wanted to make sure, that Burnsville is no longer not competitive with Inver Grove Heights, and you all have heard that. I did not like the fact that our host fee was much lower than Inver Grove Heights, and we know that the county gets a huge chunk of money. So I thank you for negotiating this, and Mr. Miller, thank you for agreeing to this, and that we also have an, we're now in compliance with what we do with other fees that we levy, like the ones that we do for antennas on the water towers and so forth, that we now have an escalator. And it's every two years, where, so '23, '24, '25. So thank you so much for taking care of Burnsville in that regard, and this is the way that we, you know, you have your work, you. And this is the way that we, you know, you have your work, you hear what we want to make sure, and you heard us, and so thank you so much for that. And thank you for agreeing, because you know that I've paid attention to what you guys pay in Inver Grove Heights. So, thank you. So from my perspective, I think this is a great agreement. Members of the council, your thoughts? Or a motion is in order to accept the host agreement?
Motion to approve the host agreement term sheet with Burnsville Sanitary Landfill for waste associated with expansion of the Burnsville Sanitary Landfill.
I would second that and tell our staff and Waste Management, thank you all because you've worked very hard at this.
Just to offer up a friendly amendment would be to ensure that the
Absolutely.
These couple of words changed.
Yeah, "may" and "yes."
Yes, okay.
Absolutely.
As presented.
With the change in verbiage.
I bet you our attorney caught that and said, no, you need to do, it's like, there were other things that he would say, "No, use 'shall," rather than, so anyway. You agree with the friendly amendment that staff is?
Yes, I propose the change.
Yeah, okay. And you agree? Okay. With that, if there are no other discussions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. And Mr. Miller, thank you so much for your cooperation and work also. Thank you. And now the next item is to adopt the update to City Policy 5.015 for the Streetscape Operation and Maintenance Assessment. And presenting this evening is our City Engineer, Ms. Desroot.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So I want to present our policy amendments as we have been provided to in previous council work sessions. Just a brief overview, our current policy was established in 1999, has two tiers based on the types of amenities, so that pink, purply color has a higher level of amenity, so a higher assessment rate, and the green is a lesser, it's still a high amenity, but it's lesser than the tier one. 50% of the O&M costs or the operation and maintenance costs are from the City General Fund, and 50% are special assessment. So that's our current policy. Why we were looking at this was there's a concern about the economic inequitableness of the assessment. So these are two sample properties that I have brought before you in the past. The property on the left has a very long frontage, it's a triangle shape, and the one on the right has a shorter frontage. Some 2021 statistics about that is they have a similar taxable land value, but the building taxable values are drastically different. So the property on the left had a Burnsville tax of about $5,400, and the one on the right had $15,000. Yet their Heart of the City assessments were drastically different in the other way. So this has some information about the 25% cap that was implemented in 2021. But this is the reason why we were looking at it, was because of some of these issues with how we were applying the assessment policy and how it was panning out for certain properties. So just a little bit of history, about 18 months ago, at the All Day Work Session, staff presented this idea, and council direction was to update the policy and look at expanding the assessment area. And then June of last year, the council ordered the Heart of the City Framework Update, which included looking at the special assessment policies, who are tying those two things together. But since we were just starting that work, we needed to know how to handle the 2021 assessments, so we came to you in July of last year. And the council direction at that time was to put a cap of 25% of the Burnsville tax for 2021, but to continue to work on coming up with a fair and equitable new policy for 2022. These three dates, August, October of last year, and March of this year, were all council work sessions where we talked about the Heart of the City Framework. We did do a final update in March on the framework update, and will be coming before the council for final approval of that in a future date. Also at that March 29 meeting of the work session, we reviewed a few options, and we kind of went back and forth on how to fine-tune that. And on May 10, the council directed staff to update the policy by expanding the assessment area and modifying the methodology to combine street frontage as a way of assessing as well as the building square footage. So the next step was public engagement. And a little less than a month ago, we mailed letters to 829 affected properties, inviting them to an open house. And in that letter we sent them, we put our estimated assessment would be based on the new policy. We noted that tonight the council would consider the changes to the policy, and we provided our contact information. And then we met on August 4 from 3:30 to 5:30 at Nicola Commons Park to answer any questions. We had four attendees in person. We received three comments, which are in your packet. And then after the packets were published, I did get one phone call. And that phone call was from a person at the Ridgeview Condos who is opposed to the change. So just a brief overview of the new calculation. This is using our 2021 costs that would be used for the 2022 assessment. So the total operations and maintenance costs for last year was about $305,000, and this is not a change. We still would recommend 50% of that gross cost be from the general fund. And then 25% would be allocated towards the tier one and tier two street frontages, that's about $76,000. And then the tier one and tier two rates are based on frontage, and those are allocated out based on the amenities, so the pink, purple colors are the higher level, like we've talked about. And then the remaining 25% would be allocated towards the building square footages, which then starts to include properties that are not adjacent to the frontage, but also includes the properties that are adjacent. So everybody that's in this assessment area would be assessed at the tier three rate, which is just a little over 2 cents per building square foot. So changes that we made, the areas that are in blue were already part of the existing assessment. They were, they have frontage and they have a direct benefit, and we're proposing converting to the front foot and square foot method for those properties in blue. Properties in pink have a direct benefit, they're directly adjacent, but they were never assessed. So in 1999, when the policy was established, they weren't concluded, so we're proposing to include them at the front foot and square foot rate as a direct benefit. And the properties that are in yellow are those that are in the HLC I and HLC II district boundary. They are considered an indirect benefit, and their assessment would be just based on their building square footage only until such time as streetscape amenities came to their streets. So the staff recommendation, this is not a public hearing, we did notify the people that you would be considering it, so we request that allowing time for anyone who wishes to speak on this item be given opportunity, but the staff recommendation is to adopt the policy, the new policy.
Okay. Thank you. I want to thank you, that with all of the work that we have done, with all of the work sessions, and you've always gone back and you've always brought back what we have asked you to do. And so thank you so much for delivering and also doing all of that work. I know there was gymnastics a couple of times that you had to come back after we gave you some direction, but then at the end, we all finally agreed on what was the best solution. So thank you so much, Ms. Desroot. Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the author of this initiative some years ago, asking for some balance and fairness in our Heart of the City Special Assessment, I'm delighted that we're finally here tonight to vote on the final product. It was a long process, as Madam Mayor noted.
Even during COVID.
Yeah. And it took a lot of what-if scenarios to come up with something that was really more fair and equitable to all the property owners. And I think expanding the scope of who is going to contribute to these amenities was the right thing to do, and changing the formula to take out some of those extreme highs by that one triangular property owner and some extreme lows, really, and bring it a little bit more fair and balanced. So thank you. It's, I can't even remember when it started, actually. Was it 2019?
Yeah, I think you also need to make that motion.
Yes.
When we get to it.
So, but thank you. It's great work, and I think all the property owners are going to be happy, or at least half will be happy and half will be displeased, but that's the way it goes with everything we do, it seems. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak to this item? I know it's not a public hearing, but I just wanted to make sure that people had the opportunity to speak if they wanted to. It's been a long journey. Okay. Seeing no one. Members of the council, your pleasure. Councilmember Keely.
There's no amendments or changes, so it can be presented as
You can just recommend and adopt the policy.
To adopt the updates to City Policy 5.015, Streetscape Operation and Maintenance Assessment.
I will second that.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you so much, Ms. Desroot. Really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
And the next item on our agenda this evening is the Ordinance Adopting Revisions to City Code Title III, Chapter 23, Tobacco and Related Products. Our city clerk, Ms. Collins, is presenting. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have the Code Review Task Force review this chapter and put together some language changes, as well as removed some more restrictive requirements that were not required by statute, such as a distance separation of 3/4 mile. The revisions are in your background. I stand for any questions.
Any, Councilmember Schultz?
So thank you very much to our Code Review Task Force, again. Seeing the red line and green line versions of this and how much easier it is to read and understand, seeing really outdated
Words taken out.
Language removed.
And it's a whole lot.
Yeah. I mean, it's not just easier to understand, it's sane, you know, right? Because that's what we're trying to get to. And this is going to greatly help our residents, our business owners, and the hours and hours of work that they're putting into this, because this is a major undertaking. They are going systematically through all of it. It's an absolute joy to see what's coming out of this. So, I mean, I am very pleased. It is making sure that it is in line with state law. We have to, like, that's just how it is. It's also in line with how we want to be in our community, how we want to interact with our residents, and how we want to interact with our businesses. This is good work, so I'm very pleased with this.
Yeah, it is very good work, and I really want to thank our staff because there's a lot of work that they have to go through to prepare for the meetings with the task force. And so, Ms. Collins, thank you so much for you and your team and all the work that you do to make sure that you have all of the background information. And then to our task force for the work that they come and do and move through all of this. And I agree with you. When you look at it, a lot has been deleted.
Yes.
A whole lot of language have been deleted.
I mean, if we can just show on camera, just real quick, I mean, if they can flip over. If it's red, it's gone. I mean, this is the level
Of work that's been done.
Of work that they are doing. This is not just catching some typos, changing a "shall" to a "may."
Yeah, yeah, it is.
That's the level of work that they're doing for our city. So thank you very much.
And the task force are volunteers, so thank you to them for all of that. Councilmember Gustafson.
I'd just like to say, as the liaison of this task force, it's been really a privilege working with all these citizens because they take this very seriously. Michelle's quite the taskmaster when she runs those meetings over there. But they do take it very seriously, and you're right, it's simplifying our codes. It's something you can read and you don't have to hire an attorney to tell you what it means, because it's a lot easier than it used to be, and it's getting rid of a lot of old things that just do not apply to us any longer.
And it's layman's terms.
It is, it is.
If you look at the language, it's layman's language. All of the legalese have been removed.
Exactly. And I want to add, Kara said that
And nothing about the attorney.
This is a couple of years left on this task force. We're not done. We have a good two years left on this.
Oh, yeah, I know. And that's what our residents need to know. When we ask our residents to volunteer in these things, it's not a short stint.
It's like being drafted.
This is about a two, three-year stint to go through all of this. Okay. Councilmember Keely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In reading through this, a circumstance came up recently where we have, you know, tobacco sellers that sell cigars, and the inquiry was, could they rent a booth at the festival and sell cigars? And it appeared on the surface that it was possibly not allowed, and I noticed in the background materials, we as a city don't allow that, but we do, of course, temporary liquor license. So we have temporary licenses provided for liquor sales at festivals like our Fire Master, but apparently we would not allow, based on the way I read the city ordinance, a person to sell, like, cigars at a festival or tobacco product.
Well, if you remember, and I don't, we had this discussion about tobacco products in parks and all of that, and we had a lot of residents who came out and said they didn't want to be in the park with their families and having someone. And then the county doesn't allow it. And so if we're having a family event
Right.
That
In a city park.
In a city park. That it's not, we're trying to all live together.
Sure. It's a little different than, you know, consuming a drink does not necessarily put out a fragrance and an odor that might be creeping over to other people.
Well, and usually, yeah, and consuming an alcoholic beverage is usually in the evenings, and there's not too many young children. If I, if that, if I observe all of that.
Yeah, some circumstances. In Wisconsin, they do it all day long, and children are around.
[laughing]
Not all day long, but they do it during the day.
Yeah.
And you can have a beer as long as you're with your parent at 15 or 14 or whatever, 14 years old, yeah.
Okay.
So
We're not in Wisconsin anymore.
No, it's just, it's an interesting difference of state approaches to that. But anyway, as I think about how we manage these things, these, you know, lawfully regulated consumptions, there was another word I was thinking of, but when we allow one but not the other, it sort of begs the question of, okay, is this a fair and equitable balance of managing those?
And there's a difference, and if you, our restaurants and all of that, they all now don't allow smokers to be in the front where their patrons are coming.
Patrons have to pass through to get, right?
Yeah, yeah. And so they relegate them to either to the back or someplace else of the, but they can't, they don't allow it in the front.
Just add that question, thank you. A great work by the task force. This was a heavy lift, 300% with Councilmember Schultz
Yeah.
And Councilmember Gustafson comments, it's a big lift, and there's a lot of unnecessary language being taken out of our ordinance and cleaned up. It's great.
Ms. Collins, you had a remark?
Oh, it's fine.
It's okay?
Yep.
Members of the council, if everybody is in agreeable, I won't unbundle this because I need four votes. So if somebody
Really?
Well, we did have to unbundle it. We did have to unbundle it.
No, I'm not advocating this.
So if we don't need to unbundle it, I would entertain a motion for adopting the ordinance that's been reviewed and to also order the publishing of the ordinance.
So moved.
Of the summary.
The summary.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, and the motion passes. So with that, thank you for being with us.
Adjourn?
Huh? We're going to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Yeah, I said, thank you for being with us.
Second.
And a motion to adjourn is in order.
Motion made and second.
There's a motion and a second. Huh?
Did you tell everyone there's a meeting after this we're coming back to?
Yeah, we said it in the, in the beginning, and I
And in the end, I want to say, Art and All That Jazz is Saturday in Nicola Commons Park, August 20th.
Okay.
From noon to 10, and it's free, so come on out and have a good time.
Okay. Did you want to also make a comment before I called for the vote?
Well, we have another meeting, so I could wait, but in the interest of wonderful festivals that happen in the city of Burnsville, and I'm looking forward to the Art and All That Jazz, and the International, now we have our lunch, Art and All That Jazz, and we've had some party on the plaza, and there's another party on the plaza coming, which are fun, and the kids love it. Um, and then, to round out the year, we have the Burnsville Festival and Fire Muster, September 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th, and primarily events happening 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th. Exciting things happening this summer in the city.
So I'm going to ask you and your, your volunteers to please let us know ahead of time, uh, what time we have to report to the parade site, and do we have to get our own automobiles?
That was discussed, and, um, we will let the council know.
Okay, because I've already started talking to people about getting an automobile for me, and I, and so, because I don't know
Getting an automobile is getting hard, harder.
Okay. So with that, and all of the information that our citizens have, now know, a motion was made, and there's a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We stand adjourned. Thank you. We will reconvene, uh, after a time. I think we are going to see what, uh...
Mayor, we need a half hour to reset the room, so
Yeah, we need, yes. So we need a half hour to reset the room before we can come back. So, thank you, everyone, for being with us.